Okay, good morning, everybody. It is 10:00 AM. We're going to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting. We are going to be recording the meeting and we would ask everybody, if you're not speaking, to please mute yourself. That way, we can reduce feedback as we go throughout the meeting. All right, and we're going to, so we are recording and we're calling the meeting to order at 10:00 AM. And if you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And please say with us, I pledge allegiance to the flag. The Republic for which it stands, one nation. Thank you all very much. At this time, we will give the opportunity for members of the public to make public comment on items that do not appear on our agenda. If you would be willing to just state your name and the municipality in which you live, we would be happy to extend five minutes to you on any topic we do not have on the agenda. If you would like to make comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will also extend an opportunity for five minutes of public comment at that time as well. So if items not appearing on our agenda, we would offer public comment at this time. And if there's somebody who would like to make public comment, they can essentially unmute themselves and offer public comment. Okay, last chance for public comment at this time?
So, oh, is this a good time for me to make a public comment, or would you like me to wait until discussion items?
Commissioner, the floor is yours if you'd like it. Please, go ahead.
Right, thanks. Speaking out as an American citizen, I have to speak out about the violence and racist hate we're experiencing. These are serious problems. Our country is on fire. Some of us, Vice President Pence, Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell, Pennsylvania US Senator Pat Toomey, and many others are trying to put the fire out. Others, including PA Senator Jake Corman, the President Pro Tem of the PA State Senate, and possibly the most powerful Republican in the state, and Representative Carrie Benninghoff, the PA House Majority Leader, are throwing gasoline on the flames. Alleged voter, alleging voter fraud or significant voter irregularities in the most recent Pennsylvania election is a heinous lie. More than two months have passed, more than two months, and there is not one allegation that's backed by evidence. Over sixty judges have refused to open a case. Yet, a significant minority of Pennsylvanians and Center County residents believe this lie. I know Jake Corman and Carrie Benninghoff have repeated this lie on numerous occasions. This does not make their lie true. You are being deceived. Please listen to your Vice President and US Senator and reject assault, attempted kidnapping, murder, and the overflow overthrow of democracy in America by domestic terrorists. I ask Jake Corman and Carrie Benninghoff to please stop lying so people stop dying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, for those comments. Appreciate it very much. We have a lot of work to do in this country to move ourselves forward and to rebuild much of our democracy. And so I appreciate what you're saying, and I think we're hearing it loud and clear today. Just one last time, is there any public comment for items not on the agenda? I just want to make it clear, if you do not, if you, if you do not see the item on your agenda today, you can offer public comment now. We don't, some municipal governments have public comment at the end of the agenda. We do not, so this would be the only opportunity. So, one last time for any public comment for items not on the agenda. Okay, all right, we will move then into our agenda and the rest of the agenda and look for a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, December 29th of 2020, and also Tuesday, January 5th of 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from the December 29th and January 5th Board of Commissioners meetings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. All right, we're going to head into our first proclamation of 2021. This is a proclamation proclaiming the month of January as mentoring month in Center County. And we are honored to have with us Denise McCann to discuss this from the Youth Service Bureau and the importance of mentoring and highlighting this for our community. So, at this time, we will turn the floor over to Denise. Good morning, Denise.
Good morning. I wanted to start by thanking the Commissioners for your attention to this matter and for making this proclamation for us. And second, is it okay that we livestream this little portion on our Facebook page? We're trying to get the word out.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. So, we are live on Facebook. And again, we really appreciate that you got, that you are making this proclamation and helping us highlight the importance of mentorship in the life of a child or the life of children in Center County. So, the Youth Service Bureau has a Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, and we are in need of thirty to fifty mentors pretty much at any given time to spend about a one hour a week with a child that you were matched with. Both the child and the volunteer go through an intense screening process so that we know, so we can make sure safety is in place. And all of the children who are in our program are here because they want this companionship or they have some need, and that need could be anything from they're just going through an important transition in their life and they need a little bit extra support to kids who are facing a lot of adversity, whether that be due to their family circumstances, their income level, or those kinds of different factors. So, we're looking for caring adults who want to be that support and that friend in the life of a child. We do have a website, ccysb.com is our website, and if you visit that website, you can find the Big Brothers, Big Sisters page, and that has all the information about our upcoming orientation meetings, which is the first step to becoming a big brother or a big sister.
Okay, thank you very much, Denise. We, through many different programs and our employees are really looking to give back in any way, we will certainly highlight this for them and then in addition to our community. And there are, you know, with COVID, it's a challenge, but there are other ways around this. And like you said, you're looking at every avenue, so we appreciate all the work you're doing.
Yes, that, thank you. That was a great, I should mention that with COVID, we, it's kind of that double whammy because we're seeing extra need, we're seeing higher need in kids and families. But then we're also presented with these challenges of how do we make these matches and how do we get these the pairs to spend time together when, you know, it's not so, it's not always good to be face to face. So, we have taken that into account and we do have safety measures in place. And I also just want to say thank you to the entire Big Brother, Big Sister team who are present here today, Rebecca, Kristi, Vernell, Teresa, and Erin, who are our social media specialists, and then Zach also is part of the Big Brother, Big Sister team. So, thank you, everybody, for all the hard work you do every day to help kids and families. And thank you to the Commissioners and to Center County for highlighting our need at this time.
No, thank you as well to your team. We appreciate that, and thanks for giving them a kudos, Denise, absolutely. So, Commissioner Higgins or Durstham will turn the floor over to you if there's any other comments you'd like to make on this.
Denise, I know these are wonderful programs, Big Brother, Big Sisters, very well regarded. Thanks for raising this in the local community and very happy to hear that you've come up with ways for adults to mentor youth safely during COVID. I think most especially with now the variant originally discovered in England is now discovered in Pennsylvania. So, let's all stay safe and appreciate all the work you and your staff do. Thanks.
Denise, I want to thank you not only for the work that you've done with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, but you've been very active in the Hope Initiative. The YSB has been a leader in so many different areas, but particularly in these trying times when some of these children really need some big brother, big sister influence, maybe just to help them keep mentally, mentally, you know, sound. I think this is an incredible opportunity to thank you for all the hard work that you and your organization do, not only through the month of January, but the other eleven months of the year as well. So, we want to thank you and really appreciate all the hard work that you folks do and all the great things you accomplish.
Thank you, and again, we appreciate the support we get from the county.
Okay, so with that, we would look for a motion to adopt today proclamation number one of 2021.
Motion to adopt, sorry, proclamation number one of 2021.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Denise, thank you once again. We appreciate you being with us today. Okay, we're going to move forward into our COVID-19 Planning and Response section, and we're going to turn it over to our Administrator Margaret Gray. Good morning, Margaret.
Morning, thanks very much. The first item on our agenda this morning is to talk about COVID-19 testing and our AMI testing site at the Nittany Mall. And as you all are well aware, we've been talking about COVID-19 testing and the contract that the county has entered into with AMI for many months now. And this morning, in addition to hearing from me, which you're used to hearing, we have representatives from AMI with us to talk about the testing site at the Nittany Mall. They have been with us since we started the site on October 27th. And through this past Saturday, January 9th, over eight thousand one hundred and thirty-nine tests have been administered at that site. It's been led ably by their medical, a medical director, Dr. Jorge Simontal, who is here with us this morning, as well as Michelle Middinger. And I'm going to turn it over to them and ask them to say a few words and brief us on the testing site and its current status. So, I'll turn it over first to Dr. Simontal.
Thank you, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to share some words. And first of all, I want to tell you a little bit about AMI. We've been providing healthcare solutions for the last fourteen years since Ebola in 2014 to COVID-19, when first developed in New York City. We developed the concept of strike teams to move different clinical units to nursing homes and set up aesthetic clinics like the one we have in Center County. We've been in a great relationship with the community in Center County since October. Like you mentioned, we've seen over eight thousand plus citizens. We have provided testing for them. As we know, COVID-19 has created a real economic problem and clinical issue for the whole community. We have the university, we have students, we have a tremendous heterogeneity in our community status. We see a lot of elders, we see immigrants, we see just tremendous diversity more than in the other county in the state of Pennsylvania. COVID testing to identify people that are most susceptible to COVID-19, like people that have immunocompromised health issues. Because ultimately, those are the people that actually get affected and end up in hospitals and ICUs. And the idea is to identify those people so we can limit their exposure to COVID-19. The vaccine is, talking about the UK variant, as you've mentioned it, it's in Pennsylvania. We sent about ten samples to the CDC last week to be tested, to test Center County. We've had several people traveling back and forth that come from the university. So, we'll probably know more of that information in the next few days. But we did, in fact, the CDC requested some samples and provided them. It's been really a pleasure to work in a community and provide some healthier solutions. And as you know, vaccination is, we are turning these testing units into vaccination units, and we hope that at some point, we can at least achieve protection for Center County members. Thank you for the opportunity and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Simontal. Yeah, if there's any questions from the board, we'd be happy to entertain them at this time.
This is Steve. Doctor, I don't know if you can answer this, but one of the, one of the questions that I've been getting, actually a number of concerns about recently, is the turnaround on testing data. Can you, can you give us the turnaround times and maybe assurance that that, that those, those time spans are being, you know, accurately followed?
Yeah, thank you. That's really a good question. First of all, we wanted to apologize. We had an increase in number of, of the sensors in the number of labs that were done. That we utilized two Pennsylvania-based laboratories, and the state of Pennsylvania changed the the status on certain projects like nursing homes. So, instead of being tested once a month, they started being tested once a week, and then the volume just went tremendously high. We have, since then, we have contacted a couple more laboratories. And moving forward, we want to have solutions and answers within seventy-two hours like, like we previously had in our contract. So, thank you for indicating that, and yeah, we have some measures that we are, we're bringing some new solutions. We don't have these problems anymore.
So, you're assuring us that that seventy-two hour turnaround period is going to be pretty accurate?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And we do also want to recognize that we do also have another AMI team member with us, Michelle Middinger, and we'd be happy to turn the floor over to you, Michelle. Thank you for all the work you're doing for our community and for the rest of Pennsylvania and the country.
You're very welcome. I'm, Trange is an emergency room nurse and also a flight nurse. Ironically, I am from state college. I've been living in South Florida for the last twenty-two years, and you welcomed me with all of this snow. Careful what you ask for. But we've been extremely excited, and I'm so happy to be home and being able to help the people in the town where I grew up to address the seventy-two hour issue with turnaround time on lab results as well. We do inform people when they come in to get tested that the easiest way to treat this disease is to not get it. We really don't have a treatment. Really, your best action is prevention. And if you've had some kind of possible exposure, we do tell people to continue to isolate until they get their results back. Because we really still are in isolation conditions, and we still have to wear masks and we still have to distance.
And so, Michelle, if you wouldn't mind, in terms of the role you're playing, are you, are you essentially at the site, day in, day out, working there and, you know, there, if you maybe could talk about that? Because some of our community hasn't, and that might not necessarily be a bad thing, that they haven't been able to go or needed to go. We do have some travelers who have opted to, rather than, like you said, quarantining for the necessary time that Pennsylvania Department of Health has suggested, have gone to get a test to get it negative so they could return to work. But maybe if you could just give a quick overview of the site, or if there's somebody out there who has not yet been there, what to expect, what to bring with them potentially, and what that would look like?
Sure. The testing is free for citizens or non-citizens. We don't care where you live or what your conditions are. The test is going to be free. They walk in the front door, they fill out a very small demographic sheet that just provides with their name, a phone number, an email address, and some demographics that the Commissioners are asking for, their residency and their age. So, we can break down the, possibly doing contact tracing where these infections are coming from. We input them into a computer. They get, they verify their ID, they get swabbed. The whole process shouldn't really take more than twenty-five minutes or so. We've gotten it down pretty much so that there's a really good flow. I've got a really good team going. They're in and out in about twenty-five minutes. The test is only a one to one and a half inch swab. It's not the one that everybody is so scared about, the nightmare stories that they've heard about brain scratching. This is just, it's called a mid turbinate nasal swab. It's very easy. Kids tolerate it. Everybody can, everybody can manage to get the test. It's very easy.
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions from our partners at AMI? We'd be happy, again, Commissioner Higgins, if you had anything you'd like to offer.
Sure, I'd like to thank Michelle and Dr. Simontal for all their hard work, especially Michelle. You're interfacing directly with people who are either ill or are pretty sure they've been exposed to someone who has COVID. I know a lot of people, some of them have died from COVID. Some of them have been quite ill, but seemingly have recovered. And then there's another group that I think the current phrase for them is long haulers. You, you catch COVID, you start to feel better, and then you begin to experience all sorts of weird symptoms. And this happens to people in their twenties, thirties, forties. We don't know how long that's going to last. Hopefully, it'd just be a few month period, but we don't know yet. Just want to remind citizens, this is not a hoax. It's real. And it's spread by aerosol droplets. If you are indoors with people you don't live with, you really should be wearing a mask. Even if you're outdoors in closely packed conditions, you should be wearing a mask. Things like riding buses, attending a concert, something like that, that's just in general something you probably shouldn't do at this point, especially if you're not wearing a mask. And now we have the new UK variant, I think Dr. Simontal called it, that is substantially more contagious than the original version of COVID. So, again, thanks, Michelle, to you, your staff, your heroes, because you're going to work five days a week, knowing that some fraction of the people you are seeing up close have COVID and are contagious. Appreciate it.
You're absolutely right. A lot of attention is, in the media, is given to the death rate. But the reality is, the people who are what you call long haulers, the sequelae of having this disease can still be deadly weeks and months after they've been infected. These people are having blood clots, are getting pulmonary embolism, they're having strokes and seizures, and it's happening to very young people. It's very serious. It's not just, oh, I feel like I had the flu, I feel terrible. It can be deadly at all ages. And again, the way to treat it is to not get it, is to wear masks, is to stay home, and it's frustrating for everybody. I haven't been to my own house since April. And it's, but it's serious, and sometimes I wish that there was a little bit more media attention on the long-term effects of this disease and not just the death rate. Thank you for bringing it up.
You're welcome. I know of a number of healthcare workers like yourself who are sleeping in basements, sleeping in garages, sleeping in campers so that their loved ones don't accidentally catch COVID from them.
Correct.
Michelle, this is Steve Durstham. I want to, first of all, I want to thank you. You've been a great partner for the county. Your organization has done yeoman's work of not only keeping us, keeping us going, but allowing us the opportunity to continue to work. So, and I also want to welcome you home.
Thank you.
It was a fixture here in Center County as a lawyer and a community leader, and also a Penn State football player. So, I want to thank you for finding your way back home to help us. And your organization will continue hopefully the next couple of weeks to keep us safe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're thrilled to be here.
Well, we have a partnership extending into the end of January with AMI, and we appreciate, again, the work that we're going to be doing in the future, but also recognize all the work that's been done in the past. So, thank you both very much for taking the time to be here today. And we do know that we are continuing to get questions and concerns from citizens about testing, and we're sending them your way to make, to make it happen. So, Margaret, I don't know if there's any closing things that you'd like to offer before we move on to our leave policy?
I would just echo what the Board of Commissioners has said this morning. From an administrator's perspective, it has been a pleasure to work with AMI. AMI has been extremely accommodating to Center County, to us in particular, and very much appreciate Dr. Simontal's leadership and Michelle's leadership here in Center County. I do want to share with everyone that, as is well known, the AMI site currently is at the Nittany Mall through this Saturday. Starting on Tuesday, January 19th, the site is going to be moving just really across the street almost, down the Benner Pike, just a short distance. It's moving to 1155 Benner Pike, Suite 120. Many people know it as the former Comcast location. There'll be more information coming out. We'll send the actual address out for the press and others. There will be lots of signage and flags. We very much appreciate the Nittany Mall. The Nittany Mall has been the home for the AMI site since the end of October, and they have been wonderful to work with as well. Due to new tenants coming in, it is necessary for the site to move. And finding something as close as we have to the Nittany Mall is, I think, going to be very helpful. So, that will start on Tuesday, January the 19th. But through the end of this week, through Saturday at seven, you can still find the AMI folks at the former Bonton site at the Nittany Mall.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you both. Doctor and Michelle, thank you both. We appreciate, again, you being here. And again, look forward to the continued partnership. So, be well, be safe, and we'll see you again soon. Thank you. Okay, so Margaret, we'll turn it back to you for the next discussion on a policy.
Great. The next item is related to our COVID-19 leave policy. As you will recall, it was revised in early December to align with the more recently released CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines. But we've reached another milestone, and I'm going to turn it over to Kristen for her to discuss and to propose some options for moving forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Good morning. Um, the Families First Corona Relief Act was set to sunset on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty. Um, up until basically the last minute, we weren't sure what was going to happen with that. Um, with the stimulus bill that came out at the very end of December, there was wording that allowed employers to continue providing the paid sick leave benefit and emergency FMLA for school closures through March thirty-first at their discretion. Um, so what they've asked is that employers state whether they are going to continue following the FF-CRA guidelines, which approves that that sick leave, the um paid sick leave we provide employees when they're on um quarantine or if they've been diagnosed with COVID. We've been um providing them that some of that paid sick leave time so that because we don't want them coming in if they've been exposed, of course. Um, and then also the emergency FMLA. You have options. You can elect to continue it and we would update the policy to say it's through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, or um you can choose not to continue it, employees within after you sick time, or you can do a hybrid where you um, maybe aren't going to follow the FF-CRA any longer, but you want to continue providing COVID sick leave for those employees that are quarantined. Um, so I, we would like some guidance on what route the board would like to take on this.
Here, and we've this, we've discussed uh uh this uh in in prior uh meetings, just to be aware of the change in this. And I think that it does make sense for us to uh appreciate the fact that it it would be extended. I think that makes sense um from my standpoint. Um, even though the federal law lapsed, I think it's been a good thing for our employees to have. Uh, so that that would be my sense in how we would wanna move forward, but certainly look forward to hearing from Commissioner Higgins and Dersham as well.
Yeah, the the new policy sounds reasonable to me. We do, we do not want to be encouraging or somewhat forcing employees with COVID to come to work. That that would be crazy.
I'm fine with it. Everything's good.
Okay, we we need, we'd uh, we need a motion on this then, just to extend it or to, is the policy rewritten in a way that we would just approve the policy again?
Um, what I would like, if you made the motion to extend the leave directive through March thirty-first, and then we can adjust the policy or the directive and redistribute.
Okay, would there be a motion to that effect?
Motion to extend the uh COVID nineteen leave policy directive to the thirty-first of March, twenty twenty-one.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Kristin. Okay, uh, we are going to uh this time move into an item for probation. Uh, and we should have with us, uh, we do, Ryan Smelter, we'll we'll, we will turn it over to him for this item. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, guys. Uh, the probation department today has an agenda item for the approval of the second installment of the Juvenile J C J C Service Grant. I think it was back in September. I believe the the Board of Commissioners approved the first installment. I believe it was roughly near thirty-seven thousand. And we most recently got the second portion and it is close to sixty-seven thousand. So, we just need to get that approval for today.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the grant award notification from the Juvenile Court Judges Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Ryan. Have a great day.
And thank you too.
At this time, we will turn it over to Natalie Corman to discuss this item in our Human Services uh Agencies. Uh, good morning, Natalie.
Good morning. So, on behalf of the Office of Aging, I have before you our grant agreement uh between the Department of Human Services and Aging um, for some of the medical assistance programs, as they call it, the Office of Aging does. Uh, our nursing home transitions, our information and referral, which is staff that provides that service um, as well as the link training uh opportunities that we have. Uh, Department of Aging likes to do uh longer-term commitments, uh similar to kind of the Department of Drug and Alcohol. Uh, so this agreement is for the period of July one, twenty twenty through June thirty of twenty twenty-three. And it outlines the requirements that we will need to follow uh to provide those services, as well as what the Department of Aging uh is responsible for as well. Um, and while uh grant funding is is ended at about eighty-seven thousand dollars, obviously with state budgets from year to year, uh, that number can change um depending on on each state budget. So, it really is a guide for us to provide the services uh and to do the reporting mechanisms that's required by the state, as well as what uh Department of Aging needs to provide to us in guidance. So, we're looking for approval today. The state would like it back by the fifteenth.
Okay, thank you, Natalie. Is there, are there any questions before we look for a motion to approve? Okay, hearing no questions, is there a motion?
Yeah, that's a pretty tight turnaround. So, I will make the motion to approve the grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Departments of Human Services and Aging.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, questions on this?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
We have an item here for our CDBG program. Although it's a small dollar amount, it still is uh necessary for us to take public action on this. Uh, from our planning office, I'm not sure if we have, we do have Ray Stalinas, right? We will turn it over to you for this item.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, here this morning with regards to this minor revision for the fiscal year twenty twenty allocation for our ECD Community Development Block Grant Program uh grants. Uh, the revision is, as as Commissioner Pipehead indicated, is um minor. It's a hundred and thirty-one dollars. However, what we're doing is recommending to uh allocate that additional money to the Penn Township Water Tank Project, which would amend their total of request to two hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And then, as Belfont is part of, or on behalf of uh, community under the grant, uh, they see an increase of twenty-two dollars and that would be uh dedicated towards their uh allocation to the Streetscape Safety Project and impro- improvement plan for uh the borough, which would increase their amount to ninety-five thousand, two hundred and twelve. Uh, therefore, the whole application would increase to four hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars with both of those increases. And we would recommend uh that al- those allocations to be um directed towards Penn Township and also Belfont the Streetscape.
Ray, thank you for the background on that. We would look for a motion to approve the revised allocations.
Sure, be happy to do that, but I also wanted to quickly say that while the Community Development Block Grant can seem a little bit dry, I believe Belfont uh used some of those monies recently to uh add a pedestrian bridge onto the railroad tracks at Talleran Park, uh, which uh will definitely improve the safety of the area, but also be a very nice added amenity uh for Talleran Park. So, Community Development Block Grant Funds can do wonderful things um throughout the entire county. So, I'd be happy to make the motion to approve the revised allocations for the Community Development Block Grant twenty twenty federal fiscal year Penn Township and on behalf of Belfont Borough Streetscape Projects.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried and uh we will, uh, I believe, so we still have a planning item, but we're going to uh turn the floor over to Diana Griffith at this time to discuss uh the items relating or the item relating to the Agland Preservation Program. So, we'll uh turn it over to her. Good morning, Diana.
Good morning. On behalf of the Center County Agricultural Land Preservation Board, I am pleased to request that the Center County Board of Commissioners certify the twenty twenty-one County Match Appropriations for Agricultural Conservation Easements. This year's request for eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and three cents includes the eighty-thousand-dollar allocation of twenty twenty-one County Match Funds from Center County revenues and nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars in total interest collected from twenty twenty County Clean and Green Rollback Tax Penalties to be used for easement purchases. There are no municipal contributions committed for this year's budget. And just to bring you up to date, as of today, the county's Agricultural Land Preservation Program has created fifty-five agricultural conservation easements in seven townships, bringing its total acreage for preserved farms to eight thousand, two hundred and five acres. We're closing on an eighty-one point seventy-five acre farm in Potter Township tomorrow. And the county board has approved two Ferguson Township Farms for preservation this year. I thank you for considering this request.
Okay, thank you, Diana. Uh, do we have any questions or comments for uh Diana on this item?
Hi, Diana. Commissioner, I I do serve ex officio uh on that board. Um, uh, great work. Um, I know some years we have to react very quickly in a matter of a couple of weeks over the Christmas holidays to um receive uh federal funding and we've scrambled and done that and that's helped us preserve uh so many different farms. I think the the map behind your, I think it's your right shoulder, are are some of the very, very dark green farms. Are those some of the ones that either we've preserved or we've worked with other groups to help preserve?
Mostly ours, yes.
Yes, but I know we do cooperate with with other groups like Clearwater Conservancy um, and uh Western Pennsylvania something or another too.
Maybe Conservancy, yeah.
Yes, yes. So, uh, great work. Really appreciate it. I'll I'll give Steve a chance to talk.
Thank you.
Now, I appreciate your hard work. Uh, we've preserved a lot of farms in uh Center County and I think uh as we move forward, we'll uh we'll continue to uh to uh work on more.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, well, thank you, uh, Diana. We are going to hear from Betsy Barnes and then we'll take action on your item and Betsy's as well. So, again, thanks for all the work and we we will see you soon. Okay?
Thank you, Michael.
Sure. Okay, uh, Betsy, we will turn the floor over to you for this next item, uh, uh, the submission of the Chuan T twenty-one Fair Housing Annual Report.
Okay, thank you and good morning, everyone. So, I'm submitting for your approval, the annual twenty twenty Fair Housing Report, uh, along with input this year from Siedicog, who is uh working with us on that. Um, I would need a signed copy for submission to the state by January nineteenth.
Okay, any questions, feedback on this uh for Betsy? Okay, hearing none, uh, we will uh look for a motion for both of these items at this time.
Motion to add the certification of appropriations for the twenty twenty-one Agricultural Land Preservation Program and submission of the twenty twenty-one Fair Housing Annual Report to next week's consent agenda.
Just one question. The the annual report is for twenty twenty.
Oh, okay. Sorry, was assuming since it was the twenty um twenty-one uh program year. So, change, change that to twenty twenty, sorry.
And and Commissioner uh Dersham did second that and I would assume is okay with the a date adjustment for twenty twenty? You okay with that? All right, all right. So, we are all good then and we are going to be uh looking for the action. All those in favor of moving both to the consent agenda for next week, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you both again, Diana and Betsy.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we have an item from our Risk Management Office and we will turn it over now to Krista Davis for this item. Good morning, Krista.
Morning, everyone. Thank you for your time. I wanted to um just submit before you all um, the, an insurance application, and I'll go further into detail why I'm bringing it to you. Um, for our property and casualty needs for the county, we do um use the services of a risk um, risk pool and that is named on P Corp, Pennsylvania County's Risk Pool. And we are one of fifty-two members that are in that insurance pool and um our policy with them runs from June to June of every year. Um, however, mid-year, they do uh supply us with an application and they ask us to complete it in in the manner of as answering many questions about all kinds of county actions, how many vehicles we have, um, how many corrections officers we have and and many more and many more things. Um, so, we complete that application. So, then upon submission, they can review our our risk and establish rates for us for the next year of the policy period. Um, so it's taken us several weeks to complete the application and I did want to um mention that there are several on the call that have even helped me answer some of the questions on the application. So, thank you to those who helped. And um, at this point, we are looking to um have your approval and your signature to be able to present the application to P Corp. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Krista. Any questions for Krista before we look for a motion? Okay, uh, we do not. Thank you, Krista, very much. We appreciate uh the the uh background on this and we look forward to I think approving this next week at the con- at the meeting then. So, we look for a motion to move this to next week's consent agenda.
P P Corp, sorry, motion to add the P Corp application to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, thank you very much, Krista, once again.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, we are uh to our consent agenda and uh we did have uh, I uh, we just wanna ask Margaret briefly, we did have a request from our Recorder of Deeds uh to see if there was any change in our overall contract with RBA, any adjustments there, what the ongoing legacy costs of this new program that the Recorder of Deeds was was asking for. Did did you hear back by chance uh from uh Mr. Davidson regarding that yet?
I did not.
Okay, um, I would, I would suggest we move this to the Thursday meeting of this week, uh, the the fourteenth. Uh, are we having the fourteenth uh meeting this week or we are not?
Yes, we are.
We are, okay. So, I just, I just because that was a question I'd asked. We hadn't heard back yet from it. I I think we're gonna, it's certainly going to Yeah, we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward on this, but I just, I just would like to have some follow-up on that, maybe give uh the opportunity for two more days to do that, um, if that's okay with the board. But I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item E.
Sure, I'll I'll make the motion to approve today's consent agenda with the exception of item E for Recorder of Deeds, which will be considered on Thursday.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and again, on Thursday at our Commissioners' meeting, we will revisit that item, uh, item E for the Recorder of Deeds Office. For our Authority Boards and Commissions, we have five uh individuals. Uh, we have uh our fellow Commissioner Mark Higgins, who is looking to be reappointed for a one-year uh term on the Siedicog Board of Directors. We also have Lisa Strickland, our municipal appointed official uh to the Siedicog Board of Directors as well. Uh, and then uh Theodore McDowell, also known to us as Ted McDowell, looking to be reappointed to the uh Higher Education Board, uh Authority, I should say. And then we have two appointments to the Hospital Authority. Uh, Rich Woznuski as an appointment for a three-year term and Kelsey Scott for a uh five-year, I'm sorry, a four-year appointment uh to her as well. So, we look for uh motion to consider uh those five individuals.
Well, I I would like to say there appears to be maybe a typo under Ted McDowell's reappointment. There's no year listed.
Oh, I s- yes, I I see that. Um, we can, uh, I don't know if Natalie, you might know offhand if that's a two-year term, three-year term, four-year term for the higher ed. If not, that's, I think we're, we're okay approving it uh with whatever the the term would be. Okay, yeah, I I think if everybody's comfortable with it, we can just appoint it for that term, whether it be three, four, whatever the, whatever that empty term is on the higher ed board, we can appoint Ted to. And maybe at a future meeting, we can um report out what that uh, what those years would be, what the year would be.
Uh, Michael, that would be a five-year term.
Fantastic. So, that would take him until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five? Okay, all right, great. So, uh, we would, we'd note that on the agenda then, that it's a five-year term, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, and great, okay. Any other questions on the five or comments on the, on these five uh appointments, reappointments?
Since I'm on the list, do you want me to make the motion or somehow recuse myself from appointing myself? How do you, how do you wanna handle that?
Oh, I I think there's no issue with you making the motion, but if you'd like to abstain from the vote there, that's, I think that's appropriate. Oh, I I think there's no issue with you making the motion, but if you'd like to abstain from the vote there, that's, I think that's appropriate. Sure.
Okay, um I will make the motion to approve uh the nominations and, sorry, the appointments and reappointments uh for the five people listed, including the update to show that uh Ted McDowell's uh term would end December thirty first of twenty twenty five.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any any final discussion or questions on this? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed and any abstentions?
And I'll vote for appointing everybody, but I will abstain for myself.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you Commissioner, thank you.
You're welcome.
And there's no, we should know, there's no monetary, you don't get any fee for serving on C D C O V, but it's, I think it's, like you said, it's a good step to take.
Very important work. They do economic development for an eleven county region, but no, I receive absolutely no extra pay except a free lunch a couple times a year.
Super, super. Uh, okay, so uh we do not have a letter of support for or liquid fuels fee for local use comp uh discussion today, but we do. Uh, we will turn it over to Margaret for the Administrator's Report.
Hey, thanks very much. Uh, in accordance with Resolution Two of twenty twenty, the county administrator is authorized to execute financial documents, including contracts that do not exceed ten thousand dollars and only in those circumstances where the funds for those contracts have been included in and approved uh in our uh operating budget. The uh requirement also includes a a report on a quarterly basis to the Board of Commissioners identifying all of the contracts or financial documents that were executed in this manner. And I have provided the Board of Commissioners with a report for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty. And the uh report includes thirty contracts uh that were approved during this period and interestingly uh twenty five of the thirty were renewals and uh five were new contracts uh in most cases for uh movement to a different vendor. Funding was uh approved and contained in the in the budget, but a new vendor was um selected. So I present that to you today for your acknowledgement of the fourth quarter of twenty twenty report.
Okay, thank you Margaret, and we have that emailed out to us for us to uh review. Any questions, comments on the list?
Sounds great. Thanks for being so
Thank you.
All right, uh so we would enter those into the minutes as well, have those recorded. Uh, any discussion items that we would need to take care of uh as well uh before we uh go into the check run? Okay, hearing on, we would look for, uh we've turned over to Commissioner Higgins for the check run.
Sure, we have a um smaller than average check run of seventy eight thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Um, the checks of the week are to Center Communications Inc., uh totaling seventy eight thousand eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents um for services performed for the Center County nine-one-one Department. Would like to thank Center Communications Inc. Um, they're a uh great supplier. Um, they're uh uh do wonderful work uh for our nine-one-one department uh and a broad variety of other organizations throughout the county. Um, and also want to highlight the hard work of our Emergency Communications nine-one-one Department. Um, they handle, I think, something the ballpark of a half a million phone calls a year. Um, and so again, want to thank Center Communications for their assistance with that. And so I will make the motion to approve the check run dated January eighth.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the check run. Any further discussion on the check run? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the check run, do so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you Commissioner, and then we'll turn it over to Commissioner Dershowitz for the voter registration report.
All right, we have this morning a hundred and five thousand four hundred and fourteen registered voters. And if you notice, that's uh down uh six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six, which means that they've uh they've removed uh that many because of the five-year inactive status of those voters. So we have, again, we're down six thousand eight hundred and twenty-six uh registrants in this report. Uh, we have forty-four thousand one hundred and eleven Democratic registrants, one hundred and thirty-nine Green Party, six hundred and eighty-six Libertarian, thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy no affiliation, forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighteen uh Republicans, which leads a total, again, with the uh with the all other parties at three thousand eight hundred and ninety, again, to a hundred and five thousand four hundred and fourteen. The feature party of the of the all other parties is Other Party. Folks that checked the Other Party box, there's four hundred and twenty-five Other Party members in Center County. So we want to recognize them as uh one of the minor parties uh here in Center County. Uh, we have the precinct feature of this week is Center Hall Borough number six. Uh, Center Hall Borough number six votes at the uh Fire Hall in in Center Hall and there were in the last election, nine hundred and thirty registered voters, uh seven hundred and ninety ballots cast and a voter turnout percentage of eighty-four point nine five percent, which is a pretty significant turnout uh for the folks in Center Hall. And the uh the individuals that make it happen, the judge of the elections is Carol Clark Beany. The minority inspector is Kelly Henry. The majority inspector is Barb Irwin and the clerk is Catherine Berger. And we want to thank again the uh uh Center Hall Fire Company for allowing us to use their old facility and hopefully they'll uh they'll greet us with open arms into their new one. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much Commissioner, appreciate that. Uh, we will uh move forward here and and make a an announcement uh that everybody's aware of, that Center County government offices will be closed on this upcoming Monday on the eighteenth in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day. And we hope that all of our uh, excuse me, employees, staff and uh members of our community do uh an act of service uh in some way, shape or form on that day to remember the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Uh, but we wanted to let everybody know again, Monday, uh next week, we will be closed uh here in Center County Government. Uh, Margaret, are there any executive sessions for us to report today?
Yes, the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on Thursday, January seventh, from eleven thirty-five AM to twelve ten PM to discuss a legal matter. And the Board of Commissioners will meet uh today in executive session at eleven thirty to discuss a security matter.
Okay, thank you very much Margaret. Uh, for uh the balance of our public meeting schedule, we have it listed there. And uh we are uh then looking at any questions from the press at this time before we uh look to adjourn. Is there any questions from the press at this time?
Good morning, this is Marley with the CDT. I have a question about the correctional facility and COVID nineteen numbers there. From Friday of last week to Monday of this week, so yesterday, around twenty-five cases were reported among inmates and some positive cases were reported among employees. They were all listed as recovered. So I just wanted to get a better understanding of what's going on with these numbers and is there a COVID outbreak at the facility?
Thank you Marley. So yeah, the numbers that on the website need to be updated to reflect what what the uh numbers that you stated, which are uh we do have uh oh uh twenty-five individuals who are incarcerated there that have a positive COVID nineteen test. Uh, in addition, we do have uh six staff uh out with positive uh tests that are all doing well outside the facility. They're in isolation. Um, and we are moving forward with some additional uh protocols above and beyond what we've been working on already. Uh, but in terms of the process and and protocols that were taking place, uh we have implemented uh masking for all, N ninety-five mask for all staff in terms of the their entire shift at at work. Um, and they're not able to enter the facility if they do not have a N ninety-five mask in places within the facility where we do have returning citizens, incarcerated individuals uh working in the kitchen, for example, or in laundry, they are all also wearing N ninety-five masks. But in terms of how this the facility is situated, uh we are making sure that we are having isolation quarantine protocols as distributed by the Pennsylvania Department of Health, in addition by what the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections is also doing and looking at. And so many, the specific unit where we have individuals that have tested positive, uh we are going through extensive cleaning protocols. Any times that they are using uh the showers, any times that they are using the rec yards, uh we're being very diligent with that. And so if we think about it, we're we're in January of twenty twenty-one, we've been doing many of these protocols since April of last year, when when we first had our our first positive there. And we've essentially just routinized it at this point and become very diligent about doing those practices. Um, and the the challenge, as we heard from AMI earlier today, is uh the the disease again is is so, the virus is so easily spread. And so uh we do know that concrete care facilities have been hit harder. And so the fact that we've been working on this for several months, um, we 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 are uh taking every protocol and we're we're going to be announcing some more enhancements as we come into the week of some things we're doing as well. In addition, we've also suspended visitation. Uh, we did that, or uh the warden did that at his discretion. Uh, in addition, we did have an individual or two that was going out uh to work at Centrepiece. We've stopped that as well. And uh, so those are some of the things that we've been working on there. But again, we have uh about uh in the mid twenties of individuals uh incarcerated that are tested, have tested positive. And then we do have six individuals that are staff, uh at least, for both of those numbers, we should say at least. Um, because we do have some pending tests as well. Uh, but that's where we're at with the correctional facility.
Would the county consider this an outbreak in the facility or no?
I think our our focus is more aligned with making sure that everybody's safe or following protocols. I don't know what the technical term would be when it comes to outbreak, uh but it's certainly something that we're very, very concerned about and and monitoring um as as we go forward.
Thank you. My next question is specifically for Commissioner Dershowitz. Um, the board gave remarks last week and about the riot at the US Capitol last Wednesday. And since then, we've heard from Commissioner Pipe at a press conference and Commissioner Higgins' remarks today. But I just wanted to ask you, Commissioner Dershowitz, do you hold President Trump responsible for the events that happened last weekend at the Capitol?
I'm going to let the history and the political ambitious judge the president and I'm going to continue loving my family and friends and to protect the things that we value here in Center County. I do take exception though to uh what I consider some uh hate speech and hate uh hate uh rhetoric in the county and I uh I will stand absolutely positively with my uh with my uh county to make sure that uh that those issues are addressed and that we provide a safe environment for everybody in our community.
And just finally, where do you stand with Senator Corman and Representative Benninghoff? Do you think that they contributed any way to spreading misinformation about the election or contributing in any other way to what we saw last week?
I think uh the the main issue that I have uh in concern to uh anything about this election was there were so many uh aberrations in the election system that uh that both the Department of State and the uh the State Supreme Court indicated that uh, I think there were concerns. I don't know that specifically uh there were any allegations of fraud here in Center County. But I do know that uh there were some legitimate concerns that uh Representative Benninghoff and Senator Corman both shared. And uh I shared some of those as well. And uh I'm satisfied that in Center County that we ran, you know, true elections and that the numbers add up, but I do have uh and I will continue to think that uh we need to have some conversation about the way elections are run in the future, uh particularly about the changes, you know, in midstream of of some of the uh of the rules of the election. And I'm hoping they can be addressed at the legislative level. So I'm hoping we can all work together. And I think we need to uh kind of ramp down the uh the condemnation and start to uh work together to solve some of the issues that we all share because there's uh there is legitimate or not, there's a lot of folks out there that have concerns that I think that need to be addressed. So I'm hoping that we can all work together to make sure that the next set of elections, everybody feels much more confident uh in the uh in the process.
Thank you, that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you Marley. Uh, we do have uh other folks in the press on the line now. We we'd be happy to take any questions from them if they would have any. Okay, all right, hearing no further questions, uh we will be looking for a motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners' meeting at eleven uh oh two.
Motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners' meeting at eleven oh two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, do so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all, have a nice day.